All right, welcome everyone to the August 12th special meeting of the Auburn School Committee. Can I ask that you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start with introductions. Can I start down here on my right, please?
Oh, Dave Simpson at large.
To check.
Brian Bellinott, Ward four.
Pam Hart, Ward two.
Karen Mathie, Ward three.
Connie Brown, Superintendent.
Ian Poyson, Ward five.
Brian Carrier, Mayor's Rip.
All right, it's not on your agenda this evening, however, I do need to entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the caveat that I am going to use chair prerogative to move the Ethics Panel appointment up at the beginning of our meeting. So do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Thank you, Dave Simpson, Brian Bellinott, thank you, all those in favor. Seeing none opposed, agenda passes for this evening. All right, let's move the Ethics Panel, I moved the Ethics Panel appointment up. The Ethics Panel is, certain members are on there. Part of the school committee's representation on the Ethics Panel is to appoint a regular voting member as well as an alternate should our regular voting member not be able to attend. We have two nominees, Reverend Sarah Bartlett as a regular voting member along with McDalia Rosado-Mass as an alternate. Do I have a motion to approve the Ethics Panel motions?
So moved, second.
Thank you, Brian Carrier, Pam Hart, I'll take your second. Any public comment on that? Seeing none, bring her back to the board, any conversation, debate, ready for vote? Let's take a vote, please, all those in favor. Seeing none opposed, motion passes, all right, thank you very much. We're gonna move back up into the presentation this evening regarding the health and safety reentry for students and staff.
Thank you very much, I would like to invite the school committee to focus their attention on data that was distributed this evening. And Shelley, if you would walk us through, and if I might be permitted a little bit of latitude around the organization of how the information will flow tonight, we think that a better presentation, instead of transportation first, is to wait for that and give you some data regarding the survey that was recently distributed, as well as some building capacity. So Shelley, you are the preparer, if you might, share this with us.
So, I made sure to hand that out so I know some of you were looking at it a little bit ahead of time. So I want to tell you a little bit about the process we used. Last Wednesday night, following your decision, before I left chambers, we posted the survey for parents on Facebook and also on our website. And then Thursday afternoon, Friday, we started having teachers and principals make phone calls as the data came in. We have a master spreadsheet with all of our enrollments, we were making phone calls to people who weren't submitting the form via the online survey. So we've spent, well, this was just updated this morning. So the challenge has been to kind of take the data as it comes in on the online survey and merge it with the data that we're collecting from phone calls, so that we have an accurate representation of what we have so far for data. So what you have at the top is by school, the number and percentage of people we have information from that have chosen each of the three options you asked us to offer. And also, the number and percentage of those who reported they were unsure at this time and unable to make a decision without some further information. And blank represents the number of individual students we do not yet have data for. Other would be the people who reported that they were moving to another district in the process of doing that, but haven't ended their enrollment with us, or that indicated they were going to homeschooling or sending their children to another school. I don't have that broken out for you, but those are the total numbers of the things that I just listed for you. So you can see, one thing I want people to know is that the percentages down here in the red bar where it says district, those are percentages of the total number of students, so those percentages do reflect the students we don't have data for yet. So of 3,574 students, 19.19% of them have chosen the two-day option.
Sorry. Yeah, go ahead Pam.
So these percentages are based on how many students? If they're not based on the total, is the total 3,574, that's the total in district students? What are these numbers based on? What number of students are they based on?
They're based on, you can see the numbers of students across the bottom here. So we've had, we have 737 students we don't have data for yet.
Okay, so we have about 2,900 in there, or 28?
Yeah, if you wanted to know, the numbers are here, so 686 have said two-day. 1,513 have elected for the four-day.
Okay.
419 are electing for full-remote. Okay, and then you can see the numbers by school.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the survey, we also asked about internet, to take another check-in on internet access. We did not ask about devices because of the plan for us to increase the number of iPads. We know that students will be one-to-one. So 70.76% report having internet. 2.53% do not, and we still have, of course, missing responses. So that's based on the responses we've received so far. We also asked about transportation, whether students would be taking the bus or there was an option for a walk or drive, there was an option for parent-provided transportation. So right now, we have 871 students who have said they'll be riding the bus. And then we also asked about food service, what I want you to know about that is that the question was very specific to say, would you be accessing school-provided meals for remote days? So if a student's on four-day, they may have said no. So I know, it looks like a low percentage when you think about our free and reduced hot lunch percentage, but we asked specifically about remote days, days they would not be in school. And then we have the breakdown by school. It's the same sort of information that's in the summary chart above, but it does break it out for you by grade. So that you can see the number of students that have requested each of the options in each grade. Along with the unsures and the students we don't have data for yet. The plan right now, and I'll let you scroll through that and take a look, but the plan for us right now is to put out an announcement that the survey online will be open through the end of the day on Friday. And after that point, we are going to have to place students that we have not heard from into the four-day option. Because the challenge with an extra option, with two in-school options, is that you can't make a move on planning out classrooms until you have data for all your students. So we will, we will do that as of Friday, we'll close the survey, and so this is another request for people to access that if they haven't. And then we'll continue to try to contact people as we would. We've run into some disconnected phone numbers and other issues along the way, so we've had lots of people helping with that effort.
So Shelley, when we look at these numbers, and I'm looking at, let's say, east, if you want to scroll to East Auburn, for example, the numbers that I'm looking at, when I look at the total number of, so 181 families were called.
They're individual students.
Oh, those are individual students, okay, all right. I just want to make sure that when I'm looking at these numbers, so when it goes to the breakdown of school, those are the people that we've actually had contact.
181 is the total number of students in the school. Right?
Oh, okay.
So because it's the all-of pre-K.
So it includes the, it includes the blank or the other?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
There is a percentage over here, so you can look across and you can see at East Auburn, there's 10.5% of the students we don't have data for yet.
So you haven't been able to reach those students, okay.
In every single, as of this point, every single student's family has been called at least once.
Okay.
That was, I can't stress for you that the task that that has been. It's required a lot of people.
So essentially, we're looking at 19 children that we, and I'm going back to, I'm going back to the blank. 19 children we're unsure of, and you're saying of those blank, we are putting those children into a four-day?
As of Friday, as of the end of the day Friday, because it's impossible to figure out the actual class configuration without that information.
Okay, thank you.
And then we will, of course, we'll post something on Facebook and on the webpage where the link for the survey has been, to say that if you have information that you want to convey, you need to call the school directly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I also just want to take a second and give a shout-out because Val Ackley has been very helpful with this data. It's been very challenging to manage because it gets updated regularly as people make phone calls or somebody else does the survey online. It's a moving target, and she's done a great job to stay up to date with it, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Val. All right, any questions?
In the high school, 312 students have not responded, and in the middle school, 126.
That's correct. We don't have the data for that number of students.
So now, we are, to offer this four-one-day option, we also have to meet the guidelines from the CDC. Has that been?
So I think right now, we're gonna let them go through their entire presentation, and, right, like, let's not put the cart before the horse. I understand where you're going, I thoroughly understand where you're going.
I just want to make sure that if we're still talking about this four, that we have the room and that we have the capability, that's all.
And, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So that, I think, comes through in some of the presentation they'll do for us tonight. Okay, I want to hear it too. All right, any other questions about just the data that's been presented to you tonight?
Just one question, this is only parents, right? This is not teachers and staff?
Right, this is the individual selections for parents, for our individual students, yes.
So do they do the same thing for the teachers and the staff, or?
I think that, there's some information about that as well.
Okay.
Something, I think. Not in this, but I think we're gonna hear some.
So these are, these are families, but it's also, so our teachers who have children would be, have been included?
Correct.
In this, in this as well, correct? Okay.
Yes, this is based on our active enrollments in Power School.
Okay, thank you. So it's a lot of data, we just got it a few minutes before the meeting.
We have also been, we've also been recording comments. Whether they come in via the survey or more likely through phone conversations, so we do have some collected data about the people who are unsure and some people responding to the choice they made. So we have that collected as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions about the family survey? All right.
Ready to move on?
I believe so, school committee members?
Yes, the next item on my list is building capacity. At this time, I've had the opportunity to meet with every building administrator and go to all of the buildings, including yesterday where I spent the full day talking with administrators about measuring space and using the CDC guidance that was issued yesterday for the space recommendations. And we used a three-foot recommendation from the CDC for classrooms, we used six feet for eating spaces. And according to all of the administrators, the student count will fit into the buildings with those guidelines.
Can you, can, I just want to make sure I heard that correctly, using three-foot CDC recommendations for classrooms, six-foot for eating spaces? And going through all of our elementary schools, our middle school, our high school, we have building capacity to meet the, one of the required measures for physical distancing in adequate facilities?
We do.
I just have a question about the eating and the classroom. I was under the impression that the kids would be staying at their desk and that they would be eating at their desk. So if they're eating at their desk and it's only three feet apart, how is that obtainable?
The models that I looked at with the building administrators include some use of the cafeterias. None of the cafeterias that I looked at would be used for classroom spaces, as would none of the gyms. So they would be able to use those spaces to actually serve students in, six feet apart. So that coupled with some classroom space allows them to meet that guideline.
Any other questions around building capacity?
So if no other questions there, I'd like to roll along here to transportation. And Adam, if I can call on you to speak to transportation, busing, and the lack of DOE guidance.
Sure, happy to do that. And I've asked Billy Hunter to come up and join me as well in case you have questions on any of this. So the transportation, as Connie alluded to, we're still awaiting any formal guidance from DOE. I emailed them again about an hour ago and asked if anything would be forthcoming or if we should rely solely on the CDC guidance that we've been given. So I await an answer on that. However, we need to move forward and start trying to make a plan. So based on distancing practices as recommended, we had a discussion today. We are going to move ahead and plan to seat one student per seat on the bus. So for a 77-passenger bus, with one student per seat, you've got 26 kids on a bus. However, if you have siblings who you can seat together on a seat, that could increase the capacity somewhat. So Sheila Letourneau, who coordinates our routes, is gonna start putting those routes together tomorrow based on the detailed data that Shelley's gonna get to her. And once she's had a chance to plug in all the actual kids who we believe will be riding the buses, we'll meet again and see what adjustments, if any, do we need to make at that time. So we need to see what can we do with the capacity that we have at one kid per seat. Students, as we've mentioned, students will wear cloth face coverings on the bus at all times, as well as using sanitizer upon entering and upon exiting the bus. And it's important for me to mention that normally, at this point in the year, the routes would have been done weeks ago. We're now embarking upon creating the routes. So one of the things we'll talk about later of a delayed start, this would be one of the prime reasons why we need a little more time, would be to get this transportation situation squared away. So with that, any questions on transportation?
So what if a child doesn't have a mask? Will they be provided with a mask? And will also, will the mask-wearing be enforced? And who will be enforcing that?
Great questions. We will have boxes of disposal masks on each bus, so if a student shows up without one, we will provide one for them. The drivers will be enforcing it to the best of their ability, however, if it becomes a real issue, like with other issues on the bus, it'll end up being referred to the school principal to work with that student on that issue.
So there's only gonna be this bus driver and the students, right? There's not gonna be, like, there's no monitor, anything like that to help with?
On our regular routes, there are no monitors on the bus.
Any other questions about transportation?
Adam, you want to talk about PPE?
Sure. So PPE has been a hot topic, obviously. At this point, I'm happy to say we believe we'll have everything we need to start the year. I would say literally every day for the last month, we've been working on procuring PPE and/or seeing where things stand with the Department of Education, providing some of the items. We've worked with the nurses, special ed, and music departments and had discussions with them about what they need. So the following items we will be getting from the DOE hopefully later this week. And items they have in hand are KN95 masks, disposable masks, face shields, cloth masks, and hand sanitizer, they have those in their warehouse, so we'll be getting those hopefully this week. Items they have on back order, N95s, gloves, clear face masks, wipes, and gowns. So those items, we know we're not gonna have to start school from DOE, but we've made plans to obtain those ourselves. We either already have them or are working on getting them now. Other items that we have gotten or are on the way, Plexiglas dividers, signage to go throughout the buildings, reminding people to distance, directing traffic, one-way traffic as much as possible through the buildings, et cetera, portable hand-washing stations and sanitizing stations. And we will have hand sanitizer in every classroom. So that's our PPE update.
I just have a question, because you, to kind of tag along when you said walking through the hallways. I meant to ask this with the capacity. Have we looked at when children are, or students are in the hallways, will they be directed a certain way? How many kids are we gonna have in the hallway? Has that been looked into as far as capacity? And if we have a fire drill or an unplanned alarm, has that been part of the capacity?
Thank you, the traffic flow has certainly been part of that conversation, both in the hallways as well as around the classrooms and in our larger spaces like gyms, cafeterias, and so on. We are working with the fire folks to make sure that if we do have to evacuate, we do so safely and we get the kids out as expeditiously as possible.
And so when they're in the hallway, will they, because, sorry, I don't know why, I keep getting these weird calls from these, like,
I gotta silence it.
Ohio, I don't know anybody in Ohio. Apparently, I must have like a.
Car insurance?
Yeah, car insurance. My warranty's gone. So, yeah, so you know how in the grocery store they have?
Directional signs?
There's signs and directions, because I mean, there could be a cluster in a hallway. So that is a kind of a concern too. I know for a lot of parents, as far as, yes, we have maintained the distances in the class because they're in a desk, but when they're in a hallway, how can we guarantee that they will be either three feet apart or six feet apart?
So I think, I'm just gonna jump on that, I think we want to piggyback, the social media, piggyback on that, we're gonna, we want to avoid the social media pictures, for those of you who have seen the Georgia High School with all these children congregating in a hallway. So what measures have we, as a school department, taken to avoid those types of things? I think that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying, it's my understanding that the principals are working with the staff to help the traffic flow from one classroom to, say, a larger area. I was at Park Ave yesterday, working with Lila, where she showed me just how that traffic flow would work in and around that school. Again, trying to keep the kids, if you can imagine a school of fish, moving in one direction, adequately spaced, and then not having that, I think you referred, that clump of students at any one time in a hallway.
Thank you. Any other questions tonight on this last part? Pam was asking about traffic flow, Adam just updated us on PPE. Any other questions for the information that's been presented so far?
And there'll be masks for other students too, I know you asked about the bus, but also at school, there'll be masks for students if they don't have any.
Yeah, based on the quantity that we think we're getting from DOE, I think we can provide multiple cloth masks for any students or staff that want them, that want us to provide them, rather than.
And I know there are people in the community that have offered to make masks for children as well, which is a wonderful thing. It's a great way to have the community kind of help out. Again, how are they going to, how are we going to make sure that, because this is a big concern for parents, is that what if someone doesn't want to wear a mask? We have plenty of adults in the community or in the world that don't want to wear masks. How are we going to enforce that children and young adults wear the masks? What's gonna be the?
The mask is part of going to school, just as the other requirements that we ask kids to come ready to learn. And so part of the ready to learn is now you're going to need to wear a mask. And if you're not able to wear a mask, we'll provide one for you, and if you still refuse, you may be excused from school.
Any other questions? Okay. Was there any other updates regarding, regarding the health and safety reentry that you wanted to provide with us for tonight?
No, I think that covers everything that was asked of us, unless others have additional questions, I'm.
School committee members, any other additional questions before I open it up to public comment?
We heard, I'm sorry.
Yep. Mr. Simpson?
I just, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, wait a second. If this is the appropriate time, but I did ask if I could make a statement tonight.
Sure, yeah.
I was unable to be here last week because, well, my family and I took a vacation. And we planned the vacation in February every year, and we had a wonderful time. I'm gonna read this, I usually don't, but I'm going to, so I stay on task and I don't hopefully ramble on too much. Excuse me. I have not had time since we've been back to watch the previous week's meeting online, but from the volume of emails I've received, the newspaper articles that I've read, and the several people I've spoken to, the meeting clearly is one of much emotion last week, thought and consideration that ultimately led to a difficult decision to pursue a four-day in-person return to school for the option for Auburn families. And I asked Karen if I could read this statement earlier, I think maybe on Sunday, or Monday, I can't remember, my days kind of blend. I believe that part of my role in this committee is to be transparent and accountable, and I don't think those are just ideals or thoughts, it's, I believe, it's a principle that I go by. And I want my colleagues on this committee, parents, students, and administrators to understand where I land on this issue, and more importantly, why I do. I fully support the vote that was taken last Wednesday evening to provide parents and students a four-day option to attend school live, for live instruction. I hope you don't interpret my support for this as a vote against teachers, safety, wellness, or a vote against the recommendations that have been shared by the DOE, CDC, or DHHS. Rather, it's grounded in my belief it can be done safely. My support is strengthened by the faith I believe all of us have in the dedicated and skilled teachers in this school district. My daughter was, March 16th, my daughter was tested for this. So I'm intimately knowledgeable how dangerous this can be and how scary it can be. My kids and my wife quarantined through the entire month of March, April, and May. For me, it wasn't an option. Like many others, quarantine wasn't an option for me as I was an essential employee and I went to work every day. My wife and my kids stayed in their cocoons. Slowly, when the governor opened the doors, they left with their masks. I went to work, I still do, I wear a mask, I am and was required to pass daily screenings. A typical day for me, I interact with hundreds of people. Coworkers, staff, and twice as many clients, every single day. To date, my employer has had a total of four positive COVID tests, and they're all clients. The total number of clients that I work with hovers around 2,200. No staff has been infected. I share all of this work experience with the virus that has taught me that when precautions are practiced, the spread can be nearly eliminated. Doctors Fauci and Shaw have been spot-on. When social distancing isn't available, we wear a mask. Simply put, it works. Again, this is my life experience with this virus. This experience greatly influences my support of the vote taken one week ago this evening. I believe a return to school can be done safely, and I completely and fully respect the beliefs of those who do not share how I feel. I have no desire or intention to attempt to change their minds. There is no absolute truth in life. For the folks who do not believe a four-day school week can be accomplished safely, you have my full respect. The decision is how to re-engage the students with the Auburn School Department has become one of the most polarizing topics our city has needed to deal with in some time. I do not believe it needs to further divide us as parents, students, educators, or administrators. It will if we allow it. Call me the eternal optimist, but I'll go to a limb here and suggest that we all want the very same thing. We want safety in our schools for the students, teachers, ed tech, support staff, administrators, safety for all. We want our kids to receive the absolute best education possible, I believe we all agree on that. How we can achieve this is where it seems we might get stuck in the weeds. I support the four-day in-learning options, I believe it can be done safely. For those who don't support this option, again, I offer you my full respect. As a city, I do not believe we can afford for this issue to become an us-versus-them one. It is within the collective weed, I do believe, where we may discover compromise and solutions. I thank you for allowing me to read this, and I say this as a reminder to myself that young kids and adults are watching us, and I want to be mindful what they learn. Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. At this time, I'm going to open this up to public comment. And I am going to just ask that, I think Shelley's going to, just so that we stay on time. If there is a clipboard, if people have signed up, that would be great if I could have that. Here it comes. Thank you. And while that clipboard is coming my way, I am going to remind the public that three minutes is what we are allowing for public comment this evening. That you cannot cede your time to others. And in asking pursuant to policy, and, sorry, BEDH on public policy, that in order to make efficient use of, of meeting time, we are asking that if you have heard your thoughts or sentiments expressed already, that we would discourage duplication or repetition of comments to the school committee. All right. At this time, I'm going to start with, I believe, a three-minute timer is not on for either one of you though. I believe we were starting with, sorry, was it the AEA we were starting with? Members of the AEA this evening? Yes. So sorry.
That's fine with me.
So sorry. Don't go very far. Are you Bill? Are you Mr. David? Okay, thank you. So I've asked that the three-minute timer not be put on for, for your presentation. Okay?
I believe you received an email from me earlier today that had, yes. That was a survey that was taken by teachers, ed techs, nurses, secretaries, and kitchen workers. It was in the, in the first part of it, it tells exactly where people are. I asked that you particular, particularly, I can't even speak. Thank you. Take a look at the one about if you feel safe to return, whether it was because you were at high risk or because of just everything. Either you have a family member at home, you have several people that are on the fence right now.
Are you able to airplay your survey results so that everyone can see exactly what you're referring to?
I do. I have my phone. I can, I can do that. I know.
Thank you, Shelley.
I apologize.
I do just want to thank Dave for his.
You have to speak right into the mic.
I wanted to say thank you, Dave, for your message, you know. I think it's important now more than ever. We may not always agree on everything, but to keep it civil and to keep the conversation going. So I think that was really good.
Sorry, Bree. Thank you. So while Courtney is looking for that and airplay that, Bree, maybe you can answer this question for me or anyone from the school department. Roughly how many, roughly how many employees are employed in the Auburn School Department? We're going to defer to Shelley for that one. How many employees are on the Auburn School Department payroll?
I'd say roughly five hundred, what you may want to call regular employees, and probably over six when you account everybody that gets a W two.
Okay, so W two, about six hundred employees in the Auburn School Department. Okay.
Is your Wi-Fi on? Shut it off. For a second and let it load and then turn it back on.
Hold on. Technical difficulty. So can I ask a clarifying question? So this, this was sent to everyone?
It was sent to everyone, yes.
Okay, okay.
So it was sent to the five or six hundred employees?
Yes. At least I tried to. My email list is like all over the place and I apologize if people didn't get it.
I just, I just want to make sure, the reason I want your airplay is just because I really want to.
No, I get it. I'm having a difficult time. I can try to, yes. Saying that I don't have connectivity and I don't know why.
Hey Shelley, I just sent it to you.
Again, somebody sent it.
I apologize. I'm so sorry. Okay, here we go.
Shelley's got it too.
Okay. Shelley, do you have it? Okay. It's the one that I sent today. Okay, yes.
Thank you. There we go.
Okay, so you can see that it is definitely separated into different categories. The majority being the teachers. And the one I wanted you.
Okay, so you had two hundred and eighty-eight respondents out of a potential six hundred employees.
True.
Okay.
Most of these are teachers that did respond.
Okay.
And you can, you can go through it, but the one I really want you to pay attention to is further down. I don't know what number. It is, I think it's.
Number eight?
Number eight, yes. Which is, based on the way things are trending now, how likely do you think your workplace will be able to safely reopen? So we have a hundred and twenty-three people who said very unlikely.
Can you read the question again? I can't get that far. Sorry.
Based on the way things are trending, how likely do you think your workplace will be able to safely reopen for any amount of in-person teaching in the fall? And you have fifty-seven that said somewhat likely, and then you had a hundred and twenty-three that said very unlikely.
I think we have to clarify. I was just thinking, this.
Right into the mic, right into the mic.
This would include like Auburn Hall staff and like admins and things like that. So the numbers would probably be less than six hundred? I just want to try to get the numbers accurate.
Was it sent to just AEA members?
No, it was sent, it was sent to all employees except for admin.
It was teachers, ed techs, yeah.
Okay.
The next one that, that I wanted you to really look at was number sixteen. The question is, has COVID-nineteen pandemic made you more likely to retire or leave education earlier than you'd planned? More likely to work, more likely to work longer than you'd, if you planned? So basically just asking, are you asking, you know, would you retire early or would you leave education totally? A hundred and eleven people responded saying that they were more likely to leave education. You have thirty-four that said that they would retire early. I just want to throw that out to you, that if, if that actually happens, how many teachers would you have to fill in order to, ed teachers, ed techs, to fill those positions so that children can return? That's a lot. That was really what I wanted to hone in on was how many people were thinking about leaving or retiring.
Any questions?
Sure. Number ten says, based on the current trends of what you know, your district plan has approved by the school district board. Do you think personally, let me turn it this way, that would be better. Do you think you personally will be ready to return in person, work in the fall, if that's what your district decides and the level provided by the DOE slash CDC permits, permits this? So it's half and half.
I asked, come back to, so that's any return to the classroom. That's not two-day, that's not four-day, that's any, any.
That's any day.
Okay, thank you.
But piggybacking back on that question, number seven. When it says the Auburn School Committee voted on a plan to allow parents, students to decide how they will learn in the fall, giving them an option to return to school either, or either two or four days a week for in-person instruction with an additional third option for full remote learning. Do you agree with this plan? And two hundred and thirty said no, twenty-two said yes, and thirty-six said not sure. So I don't know if that kind of answers your question, Dave.
So I think what Dave, Dave, to clarify, were you trying to figure out if it was the plan they're objecting to or returning? It's the plan they're objecting to, not the actual coming back to school as a whole.
Okay. Teachers want to come back to school. They just don't want, they.
We so heartedly want to come back, but only when it's safe. And I've stated this over and over and over again. And that goes for everybody, you know. I can't tell you how many people have emailed me saying, I have this or I have this wrong with me and I can't, I have somebody living at home. I mean, in a month, my seventy-eight-year-old father is coming to move in with me. So I have that to think about. And, you know, it, it just hit home the other day because I went, oh, right, he's moving in with me. So, I mean, there's different, there's different, people have different circumstances. And we're all scared. We don't, we don't know. And that's, and that's to be, that's to be understandable, but it's, I, yeah, I have no words.
And I think a lot of it is the unknown is the big fear. I think the fact that, you know, we compare it to other places where, you know, adults are working versus children working. Are the children going to be able to keep the distance and the ma, like, there's factors. I've seen how successful places have been able to implement policies to keep their workers safe. It's just, is that going to transpire to our students? And I think that's the overwhelming like feeling right now is, I don't know if I can keep them safe in this current plan.
I think your, you're, you know, I think your fear is valid. I think everybody that's, before they've gone back to work has had some fear. I know I was nervous going back into a hospital in the program that I'm in. Having, you know, thinking, oh, these people can exercise with masks on. That'll never happen. And now they do. So, but I think, I think once we start and we see what we're at, I think there's also a fear of the unknown, is how is this going to work? So I appreciate and acknowledge your fear. I think it's valid.
I do too. You know, I commend you on your efforts to, to advocate for your, for people who are working in these buildings. I do strongly. To me, it speaks, your efforts are speaking to the, to the heart of what educators are. We are lifelong learners. We are critical thinkers. We are, you know, we are, we are advocates for what we feel is important. So I thank you, I thank you both for presenting us with this information. I do. I thank you for gathering it. All right, moving on. We're going to move on to regular public participation. Shelley, if you wouldn't mind putting up the three-minute spot for me, please. And Mr. David?
Excuse me, one second. You have our list, but there are some people outside, so we won't know who to call.
Okay, then I will absolutely, so I know that I am, ah, that's very true, isn't it? Let me take a, can I take a picture of it with my phone and then I'll.
Or we can do the same, either way.
Okay, hang on one second. I'll grab a picture with my phone, then you will absolutely, and I will know. I did hand sanitize before I came in, but I'm going to give these back to you. If you're comfortable taking a picture with your phone instead of touching them again, feel free. Whatever makes you, whatever makes you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. All right, welcome, Mr. David.
Hello. So my name is Bill David. I'm a resident of Auburn. I've been a student, excuse me, I've been through this whole school system from K right through graduation. I've coached many things in this community. But tonight, I'm going to read a speech from my wife that has been on the front line since the beginning. First of all, I commend the school board for making a very difficult decision to consider a pivot to reopening plans, given the new information that comes out daily and the time ahead. Please bear with me for a minute as I walk you through my time as a public information officer during this pandemic. I'll be brief, I promise. We went to instant command March second at a time when we were seeing horror stories in the news. Colleagues in Seattle were running out of PPE. Italy was in a crisis. Food lines and trucks, excuse me, food lines and trucks were lined up taking COVID victims to the morgue. And then they came to New York. Wearing garbage bags for PPE, shutting down sections of the city and devastating impact to nursing homes. Our entire job is to communicate clear and consistent and constant information to keep our staff and our community safe and try to relay the fears, and there were many. Maybe thinking of just doctors and nurses at this point, but think about elderly environmental service workers who took to their social media in fear, like many are today, to denounce our hospital president because she wanted to wear a Tyvek suit to do her job and she couldn't. A defining moment in the pandemic for me. Our president's response was, she's scared. We can do better to help them understand. And that's what we did. And there were tens and thousands, tens and hundreds of the stories just like that because our staff was scared like everyone is today. It didn't take long for the fear to give resilience. Today is routine and we have been very open and honest. That change is one of the things we count on during this pandemic. And that when there are changes, there will, that people will be there for them. Being honest with ourselves and our entire team about this fact has made a difference. A side note that she wanted me to interject as well is they did the same surveys for their employees. The first week, sixty-four percent of surveys, doctors right down to food service and sanitation, were scared to return to work or perform their job. Within just a few short weeks, it was down to two percent. And that's, seems to be following industry standards. We've learned so much. The motto now continues to be, when we know better, we do better. We see that same fear cycle happening as we begin to reopen schools. I understand it. I think it's important that the school board maintains the steady state of readiness and calm that it is and be ready to pivot when necessary. I hope in time, I know we'll get to the point where teachers and families as well in this community. There's no scientific validity to two days being any safer than four days. There simply isn't. The two-day cohorts are controlled cohorts. They're not in a bubble. These students will go to daycare, to art classes, play sports. And so any feeling of safety is just that. It's a feeling of comfort and it is not reality. Also, I want to address the data being shared out of Georgia. It seems to be a buzzword lately. Just like Seattle and New York were never compared to Maine at the beginning of the pandemic, Georgia and Louisiana are not comparable now in any fashion. Georgia has the eighth highest rate per ten thousand, excuse me, per a hundred thousand, and Maine has the third lowest rate in the country. We have two hundred years of thanking social distancing for that.
Mr. David, unfortunately, I'm going to have to ask you to.
I have like three more paragraphs.
Wrap up really quickly. We have people behind you. I appreciate your comments. I do, I do. Go ahead.
We continue to report the numbers each day to our employees. The numbers of last month continue to go down, and particularly hospitalizations. Yesterday, reporting the lowest number of cases we've had since the beginning of the pandemic. I see numbers related to overdose, domestic violence, and mental health emergencies, food insecurities. Those numbers continue to be on the rise. We have to consider the important role of schools and positive impact of them being open and students having access to the trustworthy adults. We can have the numbers. My kids are ready for school. They've been practicing with their masks. They wash their hands without prompting. And I've been impressed with their resilience. And I suspect that while there must definitely be challenges, our kids and staff are ready for the thing, ready for the challenges. In fact, having, the fact that this community is having this spirited discussion over the course of the last few weeks is proof that we live in, in an incredible community and we should be proud of that. But we must not lead by fear. Let's settle this out with Dr. Shaw, Governor Mills, and their team who have laid before us to get our kids back in school. We can ensure that their safety and wellbeing and academic success. Lastly, as a family, teachers, we do stand with you. My wife shared a meme last spring that said, I'd buy you Lysol wipes, tissues, whatever you want, and we meant it. I'm prepared to send disinfectant, some sanitizer, buy masks, volunteer in the school. We just need to do this.
Thank you, Mr. David, for your comments. So before, hi, before we start, I am, can you turn up, Shelley, can you turn up the, the volume on the timer? I do want to stick to three minutes. And I'm going to ask that either, that when the three minutes comes to, that the speaker does respect the fact that there are people behind you and we want three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Nicole Pendexter. I live in Ward Five. I have a student entering ninth grade in the high school. I sent an email after last week's meeting. And only one councilperson that was on the board emailed me back. And as a parent, I have lots of questions and they were not answered. And even tonight, while I was in the other room, hearing some of the information, some of the information, my questions were not answered. The hand sanitizer, is it going to be sixty percent or more? I teach in Lewiston. I have a student here. And in Lewiston, we discovered at our school board meeting that you can't put hand sanitizer on a school bus. It's unsafe because. It's unsafe because it's flammable. My other concern is that if we're going to be doing three-foot groupings, especially at the middle and high school level, they're like adults. And the research has shown that transmission can happen. They should be wearing a mask. And I agree that they will not, they'll be invited to be in cohort C if they are not wearing a mask. But they also need to be six feet apart at all times in order to prevent the transmission, according to the doctors. I don't hear that happening. As a parent, I don't feel confident that my son is going to be safe going to school, even two days, because there's going to be too many students in the schools at one time. There's going to be, with cohort four, the four days being opened up without that community discussion last week, without a lot of, you know, thought and planning into, well, there was a lot of thought and planning, a lot of lack of respect for what the school department has worked hard and had presented to parents. I ask that the committee consider the hybrid model that was originally planned without the parents having the option. It should be the school having the option of asking that. I ask that we have available PPE. We space appropriately for social distancing. That the ventilation at the high school is fixed before students are there. And if they are not able to meet the safety guidelines, that we do it remotely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Alborn, and I am a resident of Auburn. First, I want to thank Michelle McClellan for her preparation of survey data, plan details, and overall professionalism. I want to thank the teachers and staff who designed and presented last week's plan. Taking time away from family and personal life can be difficult during the summer, and I appreciate your dedication to our students and families of the Auburn School Department. Finally, I want to thank Mrs. Hart and Mr. Prezant for their perseverance through a long, difficult meeting and their thoughtful and compassionate questions of the four-day plan. It was astonishing to me that no one seemed to have relevant survey data, CDC guidelines, DOE framework, or plan details prepared for last meeting. It was stated that the DOE's designation of green took everyone by surprise, and indeed it did. But that was Friday, and you still seemed not to have a necessary understanding of the framework five days later at perhaps the most important meeting this school committee has participated in. The four-day option model is not conducive to student-learner, teacher and staff support, or the social and emotional needs of students. If it was, teachers would have proposed this plan and not the two-day plan. There seemed to be much concern for students' wellbeing, particularly those at risk. Those are the students that teachers lie awake at night thinking about. These were certainly the students on the minds of the staff members when they developed their plan. Teachers and staff are the professionals who have chosen their life path to serve children and communities. Teachers and staff are the experts, most with professional degrees and certificates beyond necessary for their employment. Teachers know what is best for their students and families in this time of need, and you ignored their plan. They developed a plan in line with most every other district in Southern and Central Maine, as well as the rest of the country. Teachers and staff understand that there is a cohort of students who would benefit from four days in school. And there are plans allowed for the absorption of these students into a third cohort as identified by those same caring professional staff members. But you tried to outthink them. You couldn't keep it simple, and it cost families a week of no answers and no way to plan for childcare. It cost teachers another week where they could start to plan for the educational benefit of their students. It might cost multiple weeks where students could be in school learning. I implore you to listen to the people who know the students the most, understand the needs of students the best, and want to do the best possible job while keeping students, staff, and teachers safe. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate your efforts through this pandemic. I appreciate your dedication to the Auburn families and compassion for their schools. One last thought. Those students with rough home lives are often the students most at risk to be dramatically affected by a COVID outbreak. These are the students raised by grandparents. These are the students whose parents have comorbidities. They're, these are the students whose lives will be dramatically shaken when they bring home COVID. Please consider these.
Thank you for your comments. Hi, welcome. Can you tell us your name and your address, please?
Yep. My name is Heidi LaChappelle. I live on North Auburn Road in Auburn.
Welcome, Heidi.
First, I just wanted to say thank you for your work. I've actually been on the school committee before, and I know that it's a hard job, can be thankless, and times like these can be hard. Second, I just want to encourage you to rethink your decision last week and accept the well-thought-out plan that was presented by the Auburn School Department. This plan has been approved by RSU 16, MSAD 52, and Lewiston. Your role as school committee members is to act in the best interest of our children. And I know that's something that we're all trying to do. The hybrid plan for at least six to eight weeks would allow small groups so that students can learn the new safety expectations. It'll follow all CDC guidelines as presented by your administration. To suggest a new plan and say that they'll be able to figure it out is irresponsible, disrespectful, and unrealistic. More families are now considering full hybrid, and I don't think this is what we wanted, to force kids to become, force kids to stay home because they don't feel safe. One last thing I just wanted to say about the data that was presented. Be careful with the numbers when you see 1,500 families wanted for person. Don't forget that four-person is K to two already with the proposed plan. So those numbers will be a little escalated when you look at that 1,500 families. A lot of families were reaching out saying things like, well, should, I, my kid's going to be in second grade, so I'm putting four-day because that's what was proposed. So that's one thing about the numbers I think is tricky. Another is I think a lot of parents have now selected to do full remote or homeschooling because they're nervous about the plan that came out that didn't have any proper explaining behind it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can't read the name. I think it's Paula.
Good evening. My name is Selena Goth here, and I'm a resident of Auburn. My daughter is going to Auburn Middle School this year, and she wants to go to school. I wanted to come and speak on behalf, I work in a pediatric practice. And while most of the discussion has taken place around, you know, emotion, I want to discuss the facts that kids are, the suicide rates are higher. That's one thing to take into account, I believe, for all the children in this community. Not only that, child abuse rates have risen. At the practice I work at, we've been seeing patients ride along throughout this pandemic. We haven't closed our doors to the children in this community. We feel it's important to be supportive and to be there for them throughout this whole ordeal. And I would like everyone to take into consideration of that. These kids need you. And I think these teachers, while, you know, you may feel that it's unsafe to return to school, where's the scientific proof? That's what I'm asking. How come we don't have any doctors speaking tonight? How come we don't have any medical professionals speaking tonight about the concerns? So the other thing I wanted to bring up is, is that, you know, what I gathered from the last meeting they had on Zoom, I asked the principal. I said, so what I am hearing is that the kids are going to be separated. One cohort's going to go Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday's going to be spaced out, and then Thursday, Friday, the other kids are going to go. But extracurricular activities, they're all going to get to hang out together. So where's the common sense in that? They're all going to be meshed. They're all hanging out in their communities. They're all hanging out at the driveways, playing basketball. You know, the, the fact that we're even having this discussion about three feet versus six feet, I'm sorry, but tonight, when I drove in here, where was the social distancing? When everyone was out saying, you know, dyed bread before hy, hybrid, or a hybrid before dyed bread, where was the social distancing there? So I think we just need to remove the emotion out of everything and concentrate on our kids in this community. And in my household, three adults in my household are essential. And we went to work every day throughout the pandemic where our households healthy. And also, in regards to working in a pediatric practice, I want to say that we have been 55 days without any positive COVID testing. And we're doing testing every day. So that tells me that the numbers in this community are declining as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we have Kayla Greer next.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Kayla Greer. I'm a second-grade teacher at Sherwood Heights Elementary School. I wanted to speak briefly tonight to share my concerns regarding the proposed four-day, two-day in-person learning for all students. I also just want to preface this by saying that I had written this prior to hearing tonight about the gyms and cafeterias not being utilized because originally that was a plan for our building. That's where one of my classrooms was possibly going to be. First, I just want to make it clear that I want to be back in the classroom with my students just as much as every other teacher. I miss my kids. And yes, I say my kids because in our time together, we become a classroom family, and those connections are strong. I care for these children like my own, and for that reason, I'm deeply concerned about the safety of my students if all of them are returning in-person learning four days per week. My biggest concern is space. We know our buildings as staff like the back of our hands. We know what space is available for distancing and what should and should not be considered. I ask you to ponder this quick example. Say your child's in fourth grade, and there's three fourth-grade classes with 24 students in each class. Unfortunately, the classroom space isn't big enough for the three-foot distancing, never mind six. And there's not enough support staff available to separate the students into two smaller sizes. So it's decided to move those classes into a space like the gym, where there's technically enough square footage. Those three classes could be separated by curtains. Six feet from another, seated in rows, would be our students, and it sounds great. However, is that area considered a good learning environment? Gyms are echoey. There's no actual separation, which would make it really hard for teachers to deliver lessons. I know the gym at my school is all white cement block walls and no windows. So I don't think that would be a environment that I would consider conducive to learning. Now, could you honestly say if one of your children were one of these students in that learning environment, that they're getting the best education possible? I know that there's comfort in a school classroom that students come to know and look forward to. They feel safe and comfortable in their surroundings. Thinking of using any other spaces other than just the classrooms doesn't seem like it would provide an equitable learning experience. I also can't help but question if everyone who took the survey regarding how their child would be returning to school really knew what the four-day or two-day plan would look like. Students coming only two days would be mixing with students coming four, which seems to negate the reasoning behind sending a child only two days, which would be in hopes of less contact with other students to help keep our children safe. If I were a parent, and I was unaware of that prior to having my information taken, I would be unhappy, and I would probably want to change to fully remote. If we revisited a hybrid learning model, I think that it would be the best option for our students and to keep our staff safe as well.
All right, thank you, Kayla. I'm going to have to ask you, your time is up. Thank you very much for coming to share your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown, while we're waiting for the next, just a point of clarification. Something to which Kayla asked. When you considered the building capacity, you only measured for classrooms. You did not, you're telling us that children can be housed in their, in the classroom. Is that correct, during class time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Chris Shafeli. I live on 68 Conant Avenue. My daughter Daphne goes to Park Avenue. Full disclosure, I am a teacher in another district, and I just wanted to support the hard work that our administrators in Auburn had put forth last week. One of the questions I have is, have we asked the kids? You know, and I know it's hard to ask kids, but some of the concerns that I've heard from them is that they want to be at school, but it's going to be difficult, and they know it's going to be difficult. How much is two extra days if we're socially distant and masked up and cleaning everything? How are we going, you know, is it really that much more important? You know, our teachers have been asked years ago, I've been in this business long enough, to do block scheduling, and they had concerns, and they did it. Then we asked them to like integrate technology, and, and we did it. And then we wanted us to be mini-social workers, and they did it. We have go-bags and lockdown drills, something none of us ever thought of having to do. And now, and we still did it. And then now, when we're asked to do something really, really challenging, and there's some pushback, now our voices aren't being heard. And I say, our voices, their voices aren't being heard. You know, I'm just concerned that all the other surrounding districts are really trying to plan a little bit cautiously before we move forward. But instead, we seem to be jumping in two feet into neck-deep water right now. And that's, and that's a major concern for me as a dad. You know, I think we have compassionate administrators and educators who want to work with kids. And I think what they want to do is do it, you know, they've always been asked to do certain things. And the really big one for me is, is that, you know, we're pushing kids in. We're concerned about their health, safety, and happiness for all of our children. And I think that's what our administrators and educators are doing. My last point is too, though, and I'm just, and this is just a question to ponder. A month ago, meetings were on Zoom. We're not all masked in this meeting right now, but we're going to be asking children to do it for almost seven hours a day with a whole new normal. And I think that's a consideration that we all have to take, that it's going to be, it's going to be a big ask for these kids, and it's going to be very, very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Dodge, and though I no longer live in Auburn, I am starting my 37th year here as a first-grade teacher. My question to you is, at what cost? And I'm not referring to any financial cost to education during this pandemic. You, as a governing board, are charged with setting policy. Our school administration, including teachers and support staff, are responsible for implementing that policy. Using the DOE and CDC mandatory guidelines, many stakeholders here in Auburn took on the monumental task of outlining a plan that would address the current COVID metrics, that ensures that each building's capacity, each building has capacity for social distancing, provided a staffing plan to meet teaching responsibilities, all the while prioritizing our ability to meet the educational, emotional, social, and social needs of our students through the in-person and remote learning plan that we had organized. While it was a plan that would call for tremendous adjustments for all involved, our students, staff, and parents, it was one that was designed by those who have the most understanding of how school works on a day-to-day basis. As a result of your vote last week, the plan we're being asked to implement has costs that you need to be aware of. Although it is in keeping with the CDC guidelines, children will be sitting at individual desks at a three-foot distance, not six. Desks will literally be wall-to-wall in our classroom. We had originally hoped to have a six-foot plan that would have possibly meant maybe using two learning spaces for grades pre-K to two. That's not an option now. Having the six-foot spacing would mean a more normal feel in our classrooms, maybe an opportunity to keep our little classroom rug or have a table where kids could get up and go sit at a different space other than their desk. There would be less exposure with our smaller class size. And in the event of a positive case, there would be fewer kids that would need to be quarantined. If we were in classrooms with smaller numbers, our students would eat in our classroom. That was discussed tonight. In such a small setting, they could talk to each other and take off their masks and enjoy their half hour without a mask. As it stands now, our children are going to have to eat in a cafeteria and the gym, possibly at tables by themselves, spaced out by six feet, where they will just eat their lunch and not have an opportunity to have any kind of social contact. There will be more mixing of cohorts due to the lunch issue, and that, of course, raises the issue of possibility of more positive cases. And who do you quarantine if they've been in those bigger spaces?
Mrs. Dodge, I'm going to have to ask you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments tonight.
Hi.
Hi, sorry, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Michelle Scott, and I live on Lake Street here in Auburn. And I've lived there for a little over seventeen years with my spouse and two children, a second grader and an eighth grader. We have lived in Auburn here, and we have had our disagreements with the school department in the past. But each year, we return to the school year with renewed hope and, and we just want an understanding. Though I will say seventeen years ago, we didn't do our homework. If we were looking at school departments now for, to move, we wouldn't, but we would bypass Auburn altogether. We've invested nine years into the school system. My, my children have made friends and they are, they have made connections and they are forged in stone at this point. When the shutdown happened, we quickly adjusted. We learned patience. We learned to live with whatever the new normal was. Lack of communication soon reared its ugly head, but we continued to do the best that we could. I watched my spouse in awe. She worked passionately for hours with her own students and tried to maintain a balance for our own children. I also watched as my, some of my son's teachers did the same as well as my daughters. We talked a lot during shutdown as to what, what the fall would look like. We waited for the DOA recommendations, and we talked what it would look like in our house this coming fall. Once the plan started to be released, we decide, it was decided that I would have to leave my job. The plan wasn't great, but it had the staff and student's safety in mind. We were willing to send our daughter, who is asthmatic. And with twelve thousand students in New England has been infected, it'll be only a matter of time before a child or staff member is infected here in Maine. The virus isn't going to stop at the Piscataqua River. I'm sorry. Now, we're being, we're being led by someone on the school committee that has gone rogue. And you're, you are willing to write a death sentence for these children and staff. As it stands, we will be homeschooling our children, taking with them the per-student expenditure, which I don't hear a lot when I'm listening to the meetings. And two children score very well on the MEAs. And in regards to my son, he's a decent distance runner. He's not going to do it because he won't, he, he said, Mom, as a homeschooler, it's going to be too weird to go to school. So he wants to be there. I want him to be there. I want my daughter to be there, but we can't do it. And I'm sorry. I'm asking you to please reconsider this four-day in-person until we can, until, we're not even out of the first wave. Second wave's going to hit us, and it's going to be bad. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Marissa Morrow, eighteen Hillsdale Street, and I am a teacher at Edward Little. And I had a really eloquent speech typed out, and it didn't attach, so I had to throw this together. Hopefully it makes sense. School schedules are a complicated puzzle even in the best of times, but when you add in a global pandemic, they become even more intricate. They're a precarious game of Jenga, and they require the expertise and finesse of our guidance counselors and administrators. At EL, we have a thousand students with individual schedules, often with special programming like LRTC, early college offerings, independent studies, AP courses, and so on. Often electives and upper-level courses are only taught by one qualified teacher, and often there's only one section of a course, like Spanish IV, for example. I am one of only two Spanish teachers and one of only five foreign language teachers in a school of a thousand kids. My colleague and I service approximately three hundred students every year. We have six classes. We teach three levels. We're seriously understaffed in Spanish, but that's an argument for another day. The Latin teacher has to teach all four of her levels, and the French teachers are enlisted to teach courses outside of their area of expertise. So basically, we're all maxed out. We're, we're working at full capacity in the foreign language department. So now I'm teaching a hundred and forty kids, six classes, three levels, and you're asking me to somehow implement fully remote, hybrid, and full-time in-person, and to somehow keep them separate when oftentimes there's only one class of a given level, like Spanish IV. How do I keep them separate when there's only one class offering? Also, how do I ensure that twenty-seven high school bodies are staying separate and safe when I have twenty-seven or twenty-eight kids packed into my classroom? It's, also, how do I track them all and monitor them all when they're all on their own plan? It's incredibly time-consuming to track and monitor that many kids on that many plans. So I beg you to revote and strongly consider the hybrid-only option. A great many hours were spent by experts, not me, but other experts, administrators, and guidance and teachers, to come up with a reasonable compromise for staff and students. It may not have been perfect, but it certainly got kids back into the classroom, and it seemed really doable and understandable for all involved. So if you choose not to reconsider, however, I certainly hope that you're prepared to roll up your sleeves and help us because this is a really daunting task. And to just throw it at us and say teachers are expected to figure it out seems a little bit unfair. We all want what's best for our students, but it doesn't mean that it's safe or that it's feasible to be having all of these different plans. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Heather, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, Heather.
Oeenenin.
Okay.
Thank you. Dear committee, I'm here to express my deep disappointment in the committee's decision to throw out the school's plan for reopening, a plan which had been worked on for months with cooperations of teachers, administration, and experts such as doctors. While the plan was not perfect, it was a plan that assured to the best extent possible the safety of staff, students, and ultimately the community at large. The committee could have been involved in the planning and expressed their concerns and questions prior to the meeting, but you did not. Instead, you simply threw out a well-formed plan and told the school department that they would have to figure it out. Teachers want to be back at work. We don't want to not work because we're fearful. We want to have the ability to teach students effectively. I understand that parents want to have kids back in stool. I want my daughter back in school, too. I also understand that kids want to be back in school and for things to be normal. The reality is, is that normal does not exist anymore, and schools must have safety in the forefront rather than as an afterthought. We must accept this as an unprecedented epidemic, and we must here in Maine know that we are lucky, not safe, not immune, but lucky. If we do not keep up with pushing for safety, the luck will run out, and we will not be prepared for the realities of COVID-19 in our schools, homes, and community. How many students, staff members, and family members from the community must get sick or die for the committee to commit to safety first? How many teachers will have to quit or retire? It is not your job to vote based on your opinion, needs, or agendas, but rather it is your job to do what is best for the interest of the community and schools. This includes schools and students' and staff's safety. I urge you to reconsider the original plan that the school department presented. Vote it through as it was. Put safety first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to add a point of clarification while she's coming through to the next one. Heather asked why no school committee member was part of the reentry plan, and I was part of that every Wednesday morning from eight-thirty until ten-thirty to eleven every, every Wednesday. So I've been there since the beginning. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Amli Bjorn Oeenenin. I go to forty-four Gil Street for my house, and I'm a freshman at EL. You, the school council, made a decision at your last meeting, putting not only teachers and students at risk, but also the families of those teachers and students. You put our community at risk. A choice of four days, two days, or all online is not going to work. There is not enough space to have a safely set-up school while maintaining six feet. Three feet will not work. Three feet is like the usual everyday school day. I fail as if you've set us up to fail. It leaves us in a position that we should not be in. Teachers, parents, and students should not have to decide whether they're going to school and risk their lives or stay at home and risk their education. The original plan that you dismissed was well thought upon, well agreed upon by many. If families or teachers can't pay medical bills from COVID if they get it, are you going to pay for them? Because the fact is, people are going to get it. Teens, teachers, children, family members, they have not been all being protected and staying safe. I know people who have been going to parties, who do not social distance, who do not wear masks. How are you supposed to expect those people not to come in full of COVID or any other diseases that may cause harm? There are even people I know who have been going out of state to places that have higher numbers. The fact is, this is just not going to work. We need two feet, I mean, sorry, two days, not two feet, two days and six feet. That is all.
Thank you. Daniel? Is it Daniel?
Nope.
No, okay. Come on in.
Todd Cretchen, I teach Spanish at Edward Little High School. Couple things. One is, I think somebody before me said that this isn't going to stop at the Piscataqua River Bridge. We have adults in here who are not masked up, which I don't honestly understand. We're asking hundreds and thousands of students to go back into school.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. Can you speak in the microphone a little bit more?
So we have thousands of kids going back into school, and they're all going to have to wear masks. And as adults, we have to be a model. So that's one thing. Number two, this pandemic is not stopping at the bridge. One thousand four hundred and fifty people died in the United States yesterday. If we think that when it starts to get cold and we close the windows and we put all those kids back in the buildings, that's going to stop and not come to Maine, it probably won't be as bad as it was in New York and New Jersey, but it's going to come here. And so what we have to, our responsibility as educators is to protect our kids. Adults can do certain things in workplaces. Students and kids are different, a different kettle of fish, and we have the primary frontline responsibility to keep those kids safe. If I'm reading the numbers right from the survey, we have at the high school, three hundred and forty-one have said they want to come back four days, two-twenty-four, two days, a hundred and nine remote, and about three hundred haven't answered yet. If we split the "haven't answered yet" into roughly those categories, we're going to be talking about roughly five hundred and fifty, six hundred kids per day at the high school. Let's lowball it and say it's five hundred and fifty plus a hundred staff. You're going to be talking six hundred and fifty people in that building four days a week. That is a recipe for helping this virus get a foothold. We are not an island unto ourselves. We have our community in Lewiston, we're right next door to Cumberland County, and this thing is going to come here. So I'm asking you to reconsider that vote. Last thing I'll say is that this doesn't affect all people in Maine equally. Unfortunately, while Maine has, as somebody referenced the point, the third lowest COVID rate in the country, we have the worst racial disparity, disparity, virus rate and death rate in the country. And we have communities here in this city and across the bridge that we have to care for, that we have to protect. And so when we say we're relatively immune from it, looking around the people in this room, there are communities in our state who are not relatively immune from it but are suffering greatly. And by going to the four-day, it increases the chance that those kids are going to be the ones that suffer. So I ask you to reconsider your vote, and I thank the teachers and the educators and administrators and all the parents who've come out, who are trying to make safety and health a real priority for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Adams. I am a resident of Lewiston. However, I am a driver for the school district, and I am asking you to reconsider this plan adding that four-day for grades three through twelve. You are now adding more students to these buses than is needed. And a lot of our drivers are of the high-risk category retirees and whatnot. And we're concerned by having twenty-six students on the bus, you really aren't having the three-foot distance because you'll have one person right behind the driver, and you're looking at safety issues. And a lot of us drivers are concerned about this, and we ask you, the model that was presented was reasonable as far as us drivers are concerned. And I think with a little more planning, I think everything we could look at is maybe a little more planning for the drivers as far as safety on the school buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I'm Bethany Cutar. I live on Old Danville Road in Auburn, and I have kids at Sherwood Heights and starting at middle school. And I just want to start out by saying thank you to everyone for all your hard work. No matter where any of us stands on any of this, this is all really, really hard. So I emailed this morning, so I, I know a lot of you may have not gotten it because you're busy, so I'm going to try to keep it a little short because there's more details in the email. But I have been unable to answer the recent form with the choices, as we're hearing a lot with the new four-day option thrown in there. I just want to say I have a bachelor's degree in nursing and a minor in biology, and I have been very involved with the parent-teacher group at Sherwood, which we call FOSH, for the last eight years. I have been in the school a lot. So I'm familiar with how their normal day-to-day goes and thinking at what's coming ahead. This is, this is not going to be easy. Also, last week, I helped run a little Cub Scout camp that was all outdoors as the camp nurse with kids aged five to twelve and some teenage helpers and parents. And they're not wearing their masks, and they're not staying away from each other. They just want to play and tackle each other, and there's going to be a lot of educating that's going to need to be done. And I just want to say, try not to have a false sense of security by the low numbers. Everyone keeps saying the numbers are low. That's because we're doing a good job. That means we have a huge number of people that have not gotten COVID yet. If we just plow right into too many people at once, then everything we've done for the last five months is going to be all for nothing. We're going to cause a spike that overwhelms healthcare anyway, after all this work we've done to stay safe. My biggest problem is with the four-day option. There's too many kids in the school. Three feet is not going to be enough, and they cannot wear their masks all day long. And if pre-K through second grade is going to be there for four days, they're going to need more space to spread out. And so we need only half the third through sixth graders to be there. So, and I keep hearing they're all getting together anyway outside, that cohorts are going to mix. They're not all doing that, first of all. My family is not, and I know a lot of aren't. And when the numbers go up this fall, we're going to have a big problem. We're going to end up shutting down anyway, and then, and it's not so easy to just choose fully remote if we're not comfortable. That's not really an option for my family either.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Kim. I have two kids in the Auburn School District. I live on Danville Corner Road and a little bit nervous, so.
It's okay. Thank you.
I got a call earlier in the week, and they asked me what I had planned to do with my kids, whether they were going to go the two-day, four-day, or remote. Thinking about it, it's not really my decision. I elected people to make these decisions for me. As the school board, you guys should be able to make clear, concise policies, and this is definitely not one. I have concerns about my kids returning to school, obviously. Every year they come home from school, within a month, we're sick. School's a Petri dish. I mean, we've discussed putting in a decontamination room rather than a mudroom. You know, we're lucky we live in a state that hasn't experienced a high volume of COVID cases, but I'm from a state that has. And so far, I've had three friends lose a parent, I've had a friend die, and I had a friend get so sick she was hospitalized for three and a half weeks, and still two months later, she's ill. This is not anything to mess around with. I was under the impression that we had a plan laid out, and some unknown reason, that plan just got tossed last week. It's a little bit late in the game to be trying to come up with a new way of doing things, don't, wouldn't you think? I mean... I mean, what, we're two weeks out, and everybody has to scramble to figure out what they're going to do? I don't think it's fair on teachers or administrators. It's not fair on the staff. It's not fair on the parents. And sending the kids into a potential situation where social distancing can't happen is not fair to our community. I have a 78-year-old mother. I'm concerned about her. She, we have family members that have cancer. What happens if my kid doesn't have symptoms and comes home, gives it to me, and I pass it on? This is not, really not something to mess about with. That's about it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. That was our last speaker. Okay, I was going to say, I don't have anyone else on my, on my list this evening. All right, so bringing that, bringing it back, I'm closing public comment on the reentry plan at this, at this point. Any questions based on what you've heard this evening? Any comments from school committee members?
My concern is the three feet. Everywhere you see, every article I see, I know that the DOE and the CDC has stated that for schools, it can be three feet. It shocks me that that's the only facility that they seem to be allowing three feet. Everywhere else, it's six feet. We had an epidemi, epidi-
Epidemiologist.
Epidemiologist email us with the concerns and how six feet is the way to go, especially because if you're going to do three feet, that is the minimum amount of, of space you can have. And you also have to make sure they are masked, they're sanitized, there is cleaning involved. I feel like, kind of when someone said it's a recipe for disaster, I feel like we are setting up, setting up for disaster by allowing just three feet. If we just have three feet, then we have no allowance. We have, there is no motion. These kids cannot go any farther. I know, working in a hospital, it's six feet, and that is masked. Nobody comes into that hospital without being masked, without being tempt, without being asked questions. I mean, we go through the whole thing. We have temperature scanners now that will take our temperature, and we still have to maintain six feet, unless you are at the bedside, and then you are fully gowned and you have an F, an N95 on, and you have the goggles, and you have everything else on. These teachers are not going to have goggles. These students are not going to have goggles. Some of them can't even wear a mask if they're special ed. Some of these special ed children cannot be asked to wear a mask. They can't understand why they would be wearing a mask. Another, another concern I have is that a lot of parents are going to expect the school department to teach their children how to wear a mask, the fact that they have to wear a mask. I have seen kids outside wearing masks, which I think is wonderful, and I always try to tease that, oh, are they a superhero, to kind of make them excited about wearing a mask. But there are plenty of children that are out there that are not wearing a mask, and the first time they will have to wear a mask will be the first day of school, and that will not go well. And I just, I'm concerned that, and that is the reason why I voted the way I did last time, is because I wanted to allow people to get acclimated to it, teachers acclimated to the fact that this is a new way of learning, students acclimated to the fact that this is also a new learning and having to wear masks. I'm concerned about the three-foot rule. I really am.
Thank you. So, if, if there's anything that I have heard again and again and again, it's really safety, safety concerns, and I think as, as, as we think about this, that, that's first and foremost in all of our minds. And I can't pretend to know that I'm a scientist. I mean, I might be an educator, but I'm not a scientist. So, I think the only data we have to rely back on is what is the data that we are being provided. And I know there are discrepancies between a three-foot and a six-foot, but we can only rely on the data that we are being given and the safety measures that the DOE is requiring of us and the CDC is requiring of us. And so, in this case, when I'm looking at all six of these, things that need to be, and I'm not dismissing your concerns, and I'm not dismissing any concerns that were out there at all. This is a polarizing topic. This has, as we have seen, played out on social media this past week. This is a concern of many citizens, and so, people are all over the place on this. So, at this point, holding through to this, to this data, through being told that, you know, there are planning concerns for educators as they are coming forward, that we are mandated to follow CDC and DOE, and, and it has been, and I will take Michelle McCollum's words, that it's the health and safety of our staff and students, as well as maximizing in-person learning, is really what we are, what our two lenses are, that it's, that it's important that we, that we look through. So, this is, you know, the data that you've been presented tonight with, with family choice. I understand there may have been some, some confusion around there. Are these locked in stone? If a parent, you know, all of a sudden changes their, their mind for some reason, can they contact the school and say, we really would like to make a different choice for our, for our children? Can they contact the school?
I'll answer that. I think the answer is yes. But we would ask for parents to work with us because there are fairly sophisticated procedures, whether it's busing or class assignments, that we're going forward with, whether to keep kids in cohorts. It's challenging at the high school to do that, and that if, if parents change back and forth, it just makes that process that much harder.
Okay, all right, thank you. But I do, I don't want anyone to think that we don't, that we haven't heard, so I'm going to, do you have a question?
I do. Shelley, so this was brought up as well, the 4-1 day. A lot of, and I hadn't even considered this until someone brought it up, is that, did, what is the percentage of the parents who responded yes to the 4-1 day that already had children in the K through three that were already going to be four days?
I'd have to go back and look at the data, but you can see the numbers in-
Right here. It's listed out by K1 and 2.
That have requested something other than four-day. But I can't, I wouldn't be able to tell from our data whether the people who chose four days in pre-K2 did that because that was already the plan or not.
Numbers are across the top.
But you can see, like, if you look at East Auburn-
Or with the choice of four, would they choose four?
Right, if you look at East Auburn, you can see that there were four kindergarten students, one first grade, and three third grade that requested something other. They requested the two-day for pre-K2. And then, there are a total of, let's see, 14 students in K2 that are requesting remote. But what I can't tell you is whether or not the, the 10-1931 that requested the four-day did so because they thought that was already the plan, so that's what they put. I couldn't tell you that.
Thank you. I think it's important for the committee to remember too, that we have another check-in from the, is it the DOE, who gives us our indication, which is coming up again on Friday. So, we have a few more check-ins before, with our designation of red, yellow, and green. At the meeting this morning, the, the reentry meeting, Matt Feifield gave his information as far as can he give specific to Auburn, what we have seen for cases that are specific to Auburn, and what our, where our numbers are trending.
So, the trending is in the right direction, and they're very modest as compared both to the state of Maine as well as to the nation as a whole. I, I don't have Matt's numbers in front of me, but they, he seemed very confident that they were trending in the direction he wanted to see them go.
Okay. I believe I remember reading, we've had, and just specific to Auburn alone, one positive case in the last two weeks, I believe, is what he shared, if I, if I read that correctly, which I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I've got that one right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to move on, onto the, if there are no further questions for the reentry committee. All right, we are going to move on to, moving on to the next piece, which is going down to the calendar. New business, we have a proposal to revise the school calendar. Do you want to do? So, we have a, we have a proposal to move the first student day, which was originally slated for Aug-, I'm sorry, teachers returning August 25th, with students returning on August 31st or September 1st, depending on which grade level you were in. So, we have a request from the Auburn School Department to move the first start date for students to September 14th, but for staff day to leave as August 25th.
May I speak to that?
Absolutely, please.
Chairperson, so there are a couple of reasons for this request. The first is that you may remember that the state didn't announce its CRF funding until the 1st of August, and so, we didn't know that we would be able to make significant improvements to things like ventilation at Yale until, what is today? Today's the 12th, about a week and a half ago. So, those are important reasons that we want to address right away, the issues of ventilation. The second thing is, Mr. Hanson touched on a little bit tonight, some of the PPE. We have yet to receive any PPE from the Maine Department of Education, and I believe we've got 17,000 masks, Adams, that sound right? So, while the city has stepped up and there have been other reach-outs made, we're still waiting for some fairly sizable deliveries, of which very, very few have arrived. So, that's the second reason. The third is Adam touched on transportation, and as we start to parse through where kids live, how many kids we can put on a bus, at this point, well, we're going with what we think is a good guideline, and I just want, the CDC issued new guidelines today. Transportation is still yet unknown. So, we have a lot to figure out, and Mr. Hunter has a lot of work to do regarding those transportation routes. So, all of that adds up to the need for later start to school. We wish we could have anticipated these things six weeks ago. We didn't. We had no idea that the DOE would take as long as it has to issue the guidance that has come to us, the equipment that we still don't have, and some of the guidance regarding transportation. And the, I know Mrs. Hart talked a lot about the CDC guidance regarding three feet, six feet. One of the things that we've been really frustrated with is the, what I call shifting sands of the CDC. Sometimes it pertains to social distancing, sometimes it's masks. It seems as though that changes almost by the week, and so, we want to be as prepared as possible and as organized as possible, and in order to do that, we feel we really need to delay the start of school. What we would like to do though, for the week after Labor Day, which I think is the 8th, is to start to bring in some of our kids who are making transitions, and one of those kids, one of those groups would be kindergarten screening. That wasn't done last fall. We need to identify a day to bring kids in for screening. We'd like to bring in the seventh graders because they missed step-up day last year, and have them at least have a tour through the middle school. We'd like to have some time for ninth graders to orient themselves for Edward Little, and with the board's understanding, we would use part of that week for some of those transitions as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to open this up to public comment. If there's anyone who would like to comment specifically on the revised school calendar Seeing none, and, I guess before I put a motion, I'd say we need a motion before we have a conversation or discussion, correct? So, I need a motion to approve-
I move that we revise the school calendar for the first student day to be September 14th.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Simpson, second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam Hart. All right, conversation, discussion, debate.
Dr. Brown, can you, can you confirm that we'd be requesting this later start date regardless if we had gone with the original plan? Is this just because we've, you know, gone with the, the modified plan, or would we be, because we would not have enough PPE, we'd still be looking at pushing back to the 14th? Or would we, would we have gone with the original plan start date?
I think it would have been really hard under the best of circumstances to start on the 31st, regardless of what plan was selected by people. We are in the process to operationalize the iPad purchase that you folks authorized back in July. That was July 28th, and slowly making plans to get those into the hands of kids. So, I, it would have been very difficult. I think we'd be sitting here tonight, even with a two-day option, asking to extend the start of school.
Thank you.
Which I think is typical for what's happening for even schools who are adopting the hybrid model, they are asking for the, for an extension.
Could you also clarify, or can you just publicly state that we did not spend $2.5 million on iPads? There was some discussion on social media that we spent $2.5 million on iPads, and I want you to clarify what that, what that breakdown was and what we spent that money on.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, we, with the board's support, recommended one-to-one for all of our students, pre-K through 12. And in order to achieve that, we needed to buy approximately half a million dollars in iPads, especially for the primary grades. That was coupled with an approval from the school committee to purchase a Pro AV system, and that would put 300 classroom sets of Pro AV materials that include microphones, cameras, so that kids who are at home are able to remote into the classroom.
And you probably said this, but that was all through federal dollars. It didn't cost taxpayers a penny.
That's right. That's through the COVID relief funds, and that, again, not to continuously say unkind things about the Department of Education, but they've just now released the application for those funds. And we submitted it, and it was, they had a very hard time with sales and getting it submitted, so we got approval today for that. So, that's, that's, that is, yes, those are federal dollars. It's been approved. I'd like to publicly thank Adam and his team because they were the real workhorses who got that done. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or debate about, in regards to the first student day?
How long will it take to have that Pro AV set up in those classes?
We are, we pursuant to the board's agreement, we are starting with volunteers. So, at last count, I had, I want to say, 60 classrooms who had volunteered to go first. Peter Robinson met with the vendor today. We're hoping to have those classrooms ready to go for the start of school, and then we'll start phasing in everybody else.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the revisions to the school year, the, sorry, the school calendar for school year 2021. Let's take all those in favor for amending the start of the school year. Motion passes. Thank you. Absolutely. Public participation this evening for anything that is not on the agenda. Don't believe we have any. All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we've come to the end of our agenda, and need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please. Thank you. Brian Bownap?
Second.
Second. Dave Simpson? All those in favor? Motion approves. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.